Well, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. We're glad that you're here with us today. And as we normally do, we'll start with an invocation and prayer led by Commissioner McCam. Doesn't look like Brother Graham's here, so I'll lead us in the prayer, if you would please. Our most gracious heavenly Father Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for those that have gathered here with us, Lord. And Father, we ask that you watch over this court and the decisions that it makes today. And then we try to remember those that we are charged by. And Father, help us to do your will. And Father, please be with those who are less fortunate than us and watch over our law enforcement and all of those that are in need. Father, we thank you for all the blessings and give you all the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, the time is nine oh one. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting of Commissioner's Court to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court on March the 21st, 2023. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the minutes?
Yes, I have some. On the minutes where I was doing the right-of-way permit for Encore, it doesn't have the vote on the bottom of it, how they voted on it. It should be voted unanimously.
Ah, correct.
And on the bills, the 2023 bills, Richardson made the motion, and it says five v. seconded it, but it was McCam. And one more down on the motion for Kaufman County interlocal agreement. It says that I made the motion and seconded it, but it should be Richardson.
It does.
And also, it needs to have the cutoff litigation taken out of that motion.
That is true.
And I've already, my margin already has the changes.
Okay.
And that's all that I found.
Anything else, Court? Entertain the motion on the amended minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended minutes from the previous held Commissioner's Court meeting on March 21st, 2023, as presented and amended.
I'll second the motion.
A motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the minutes as amended. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present. Item two is consider and take action on a request for refund of overpaying of taxes from Henderson County, Texas as a collector. Good morning.
Good morning. I have four refund checks for court approval totaling $32,749.34. I also want to point out that the first check on my list, the reason for that exemption or for the refund check is not due to ag. It's actually due to a value correction.
Questions, Court?
Reduction improvements, is that from the ARB, from the appraisal board?
Yes.
Any further questions?
About the other one down, B and G Trust, is that an appraisal board reduction also? Or is that a new home that was being built that's...
The value, other value correction?
Or was that appraisal from January that maybe not a completed home or something?
I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and look at it. Let's see.
Which one is the commissioner's? Is that the third one?
About the third one down, I think. Yeah. And that's the one I was looking at. They went from nearly a million-dollar home down to $255,000 on the improvements.
Yes, it says it was incomplete January the first.
Incomplete on January the first. Okay. That's what I was thinking it would probably be. All right.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing done. Entertain the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the tax refunds.
I'll second the motion.
I'll give it to him.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Search Collector as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present. Thank you, ma'am. Item number three is consider and take action to enter into an interlocal agreement with Rains County for inmate housing at the Henderson County Jail. Sheriff?
Good morning, Court. This is our standard agreement. As y'all know, we were housing a few Rains County inmates. They needed some help, and Rains County brought the agreement before their court and got it back to us. So this is basically just finalizing the steps so we can get our invoices through them and get paid for the housing that we've already done.
Questions for the sheriff? Hearing done. Entertain the motion with judge's authorization to sign.
I'll make a motion of agreement to interlocal, interlocal agreement with Rains County for inmate housing.
Judge's authorization.
With the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the interlocal agreement with Rains County for inmate, for inmate housing at Henderson County Jail with the judge's authorization to sign. Any further comment? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present. Thank you, Sheriff. Item four, consider and take action on interlocal agreements between Henderson County and the following entities for the conducting of the May 6th, 2023 elections, those being the City of Seven Points, City of Maybank, City of Brownsboro, City of Chandler, Gun Barrel City, City of Athens, Athens ISD, Maybank ISD, and Eustace ISD. Ms. Lucky?
Yes, good morning, Court. I bring this morning the interlocal agreements with these filing entities. They're the standard agreement that we normally go into. The early voting's going to be a little bit busy. We'll have five locations open. City of May, or Maybank ISD has added additional places, so... But then we'll have seven locations open on Election Day.
Question for Ms. Lucky?
On Black Tool and Malakoff and Katenee, will they come later?
Tools in the fall. Malakoff's hosting their own. Katenee did not, they canceled their election. Law Cabin has an election they're hosting on their own. Star Harbor is hosting on their own. So I am providing a training this afternoon for processing voters and checking in voters for them to help them out a little bit. So we're assisting them a little bit, but they're, they'll be okay.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner?
I have no question.
No questions.
You see anything pending? We've been doing this, set up a number of years. You know, we assist, and we even have our election centers through voting. What I hear coming on the horizon is concerning how the legislature and our election processes, you got anything you want to share in this?
They are talking, the entities, they would like to require us to host their elections for them. That's one that's pending right now. I'm trying to develop those relationships with the cities that we do not host right now, and hopefully that they will. That with them, with us hosting it, it's easier for us to check in. Because if they do it on their own, they have a paper pull book, and I print that for them, and that's the way they check their voters in. So if we could help them out and get them on board with us, I think we're getting there, so...
More or less requiring the other entities to use the county to administer their elections.
Yes.
Anything on the fee? You know, we, we at least cover our costs now, usually, when they require...
Yeah, I mean, they pay for their own. It's a little bit more in programming and stuff, and then they pay for site support. So what they pay in site support, they could be paying us to handle their elections, so... I mean, I try to make it as feasible as possible, and I spread out the workers. We work a lot for them. I mean, I plan on staying in Maybank, the whole early voting. We are hosting the Van Zant County voters. We're handling those for Van Zant County, so...
The Maybank ISD going up into Van Zant?
Yeah, and we will have a polling location in the City of Maybank at City Hall that is in Kaufman County, but we've gotten that approved through the Secretary of State. So we're just making it easier for the voter. I mean, whoever walks in that door will be able to vote. Just depends on what table they go to.
So we'll be running the election in three counties? Four Maybank ISD?
Well, no, just two. Our county and Van Zant County. Kaufman County's doing their own. So at Maybank, we'll have a table for Kaufman County and then a table for Henderson, Van Zant County. So we'll handle. And then Athens ISD goes into Van Zant County and Anderson. Eustace ISD goes into Van Zant County, so we're handling that for Van Zant County.
Okay. Reason I bring it up is that it's not just going and filling out a ballot. There's a lot more still to be focused, realized. All right. Any further comments, Court? Entertain a motion with authorization of all necessary signatures.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the interlocal agreements between Henderson County and all the aforementioned entities with all necessary signatures authorized. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five is consider and take action on interlocal cooperation agreement contract for labor and equipment use between the City of Berryville and Henderson County located in Precinct Four. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, this is the same interlocal agreement that we agreed to last week with Coffee City. It's for the county to do $5,000 worth of labor and equipment per year for their city streets. And we normally do this. I usually do mine in a three-year, three years at a time, so I don't have to come back every time they ask for something to be done to have to bring it to court each time. So it's just an ongoing deal, and I keep up the labor and stuff on it for $15,000 for a three-year period.
Questions, Court? And I've got one question mainly for our TDM representative in the back. These rates are FEMA rates.
FEMA rates, yes. Wherever we go off of the most current FEMA rates on the equipment rates, and then whatever the labor is for the employee that's doing the job.
All right, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Entertain the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, for an interlocal cooperation agreement contract for the labor and equipment use between the City of Berryville and Henderson County with the judge's authorization to sign.
Second to motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement contract for labor and equipment use between the City of Berryville and Harrison County located in Precinct Four with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously with those present. Item number six is consider and take action on a presentation and possible action on contract with McKinstry to implement investment-grade audit scope of work into scope of work and energy savings performance contract using tips co-op purchasing agreement number 17010 contingent upon legal review of contract and third-party engineering review of IG. Hey, good morning, gentlemen. Please introduce yourselves.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge McKinney. So if you remember, my name's Corke Moreno with McKinstry. I've got the team here, Dylan, Dan, Ryan, and David back there. Appreciate the time here. We did prepare a presentation for the court. What we're here to do, present, is what we call the pre-final investment-grade audit report. And it kind of helps to maybe show the timeline for your reference. As you can see, back in October, we kickstarted the investment-grade audit. Ever since, been working closely with the sheriff and his team and the judge on identifying and kind of prioritizing facility improvement measures for the jail. Then back in last month, in February, we presented the rough order of magnitude, scope of work to the judge. Mary Ann was there, I believe Commissioner Chuck and the sheriff, kind of giving high-level cost estimates on the scope of work and pricing. And the feedback was to go ahead and move forward, finalize the facility improvement measures, the recommended measures, as well as bringing to the court final pricing, which is what we are here to present today. If approved...
And if I might, for a little bit of background for those not up to speed, we entered into this due to aging equipment at the jail. And Sheriff, feel free, you know, AC equipment, high water use, which we've had discussed ad nauseam over the last 10 years here at the county. And finding a way to not only improve the HVA system and all of those, the monitoring and so forth, but also to do it in a way that is both economical and being able to use that buying power of the economy. So we kind of put all these together and brought McKinstry in to review and to help us find those needed areas. And this has been the timeline along that we've been working. So I should have started, and I apologize, so please continue.
Yeah, to maybe go to the next slide and sort of double down or continue on what you were speaking to. One more slide, if you don't mind. So these are the county's stated goals, which were, you know, mutually agreed upon very, very early on. And these were basically our marching orders in, you know, providing this scope of work, which includes, you know, address deferred maintenance, looking at identifying old and inefficient equipment to identify and make recommendations around the jail's high water usage, create cost savings on your utility spend, and have some maintenance support strategies moving forward. So we start to these from very early on, and that's kind of what you're saying. There were issues at the jail that we identified and are ready to kind of present to the court today. The next slide is a quick overview to highlight the utility spend. This is just to show that, you know, this serves as the baseline, benchmark to, this is how much the jail is spending. Our main focus is only on the jail, and this is how much you're spending annually on your utilities, and that's what we can base our savings upon. The next slide is more of seasonal trending over 12 months. We just doing our own due diligence to see if there's any anomalies, which we didn't find. This all makes perfect sense as far as the seasonal trends, where in the summer, electricity goes up, the gas usage goes down. And on the top right, you can see the water usage, which is pretty, pretty straight, which is what it's supposed to look like. So again, we didn't, we didn't identify any huge spikes that would create cause for concern. And this, again, serves as kind of the baseline, which we're basing our estimates on moving forward. Now, next slide, we start to get into the initial proposed scope of work, starting with the water management system to help reduce the usage of water at the jail and also give the jail control over, you know, turning the water usage on and off. We wanted to investigate a potential water leak or faulty water meters because of the high water usage. We also looked at ozone laundry to improve laundry efficiency and runtimes. HVAC replacement, that was a pretty, pretty ongoing issue and costly issue at the jail, which we identified some HVAC units for replacement. And then transition to sustainable operation refers mostly around the control system, which was becoming quite obsolete and creating a lot of maintenance problems. So it pleases the Court, I'd like to hand it over to Dylan now to get, provide more details around the recommended scope of work, and then we can discuss the financials. Any questions so far?
Thanks, Jorge. I'm Dylan Gaseford. I'm the project director for this. I'm a mechanical engineer, and we have our engineering team. We've been, like Jorge said, we've been out here working with county actually well before October, before we entered into the investment-grade audit. What I kind of wanted to hone in on a little bit here today was the, one of the anomalies that we did see was just the excessive water usage at the jail. There at approximately 21 million gallons, 21 million gallons a year being consumed over there right now. As a benchmark against some other comparable counties, give or take, it is significantly higher. So we, you know, spent a lot of time with the judge and sheriff and talking to everybody about what the possible issues could be. So we determined to really dig in deep and install meters. So we started metering at the middle of the winter last year and put meters on the laundry, put meters on the kitchen, the main meter, to really help identify what could be some potential issues or where some of the water losses may have been coming from. Initially, when we came out and presented our, just kind of standard rules of thumb, estimated around 30% savings that we are, you know, more than confident to guarantee. Through this extra exercise here and going and putting out meters, we found an additional 15% on top of that through, you know, deeper dives. And so we found that there were some losses through some of the washdown areas in the kitchen. There was excessive usage on the laundry there. And then we did just see some, you know, some higher usage from what we call, you know, recreational flushing or additional uses there. So, you know, a big part of this project and the success of this project is going to be centered around reducing the usage of water over the Justice Center. So without digging into all the details, we just kind of want to show that we, you know, really, really took a deep dive into this. So any questions around the water? I know that this has been a pretty key issue or concern, Commissioners. I know we've discussed it quite a bit. I just want to make sure before I move on past that, that... So what, what we're proposing around the water conservation would be retrofitting your valve systems, retrofitting high-security fixtures. And then what we've done with similar counties, and it's been a great success in the past, is put on electronic controls. So this is kind of a, what we would call a water management system. So we will install controls around the valves and flush valves that will help control the usage. So you can go in and schedule, you know, X number of flushes per hour. You can schedule shutdowns. You can schedule certain times to reduce that recreational flushing. So what that's going to do is that's, you know, inherently, that's going to save on your water usage, but it's also going to save with some operations and maintenance, you know, concerns and issues that they may have. So through that, we're estimating, well, not estimating, we've calculated over 6.5 million gallons saved through a water management control system. So out of your 21 million, that's, you know, 30% of it right there. We're also proposing ozone laundry. So this will reduce the water consumption around your laundry systems. And this was rather large usage as well, where we're estimating 1.75 million gallons saved around ozone laundry facility improvement.
And that, that 1.75 million is on top of the six...
On top of that, in addition to that. So you are, the math is, what, eight points?
It's around eight, eight million.
Eight million? So eight million gallons guaranteed savings, and you're 8.5, so... We initially showed this months back where we had the estimated savings for Henderson County at 30%. And it's actually gone up since, 40%, since we've got our latest final, final numbers. So you can kind of see, you know, just kind of looking at some surrounding counties where their water usage was, the counties that we've done projects with, the amount that we saved there, you know, Ellis County was 2.5 million, somewhere in that range, and we're looking at over 8.5 million saved here at Henderson County.
Unlike those ozone washing machines and stuff, what is the lifetime on those?
Fifteen, twenty years. Fifteen to twenty years, yeah.
Okay.
They require maintenance, but compared to regular washing machines, much less.
Yeah, and part of the contract here would be to hand over preventative maintenance and scheduled maintenance, things like that, so that the county can really take advantage of the life of the units there. Not just for the little washing machines, but for HVAC units, for controls, everything, so... So I kind of touched on this. If we want to go to the next one. So the next thing we were asked to look at was the lifespan of the HVAC units. There's several since we actually started this investigation that have failed since we, you know, begun. I think the count we're at right around now is about nine out of the units that failed since we first started walking. So we're seeing, you know, some of the predictions we saw that either the end of useful life are kind of coming to fruition. We did work with the judge and maintenance staff to help prioritize from one to three the units that are either priority one would be an immediate replacement necessary. These are ones that are just... These are ones that are just, they're not even, they're turned off, they're not functioning, they're not being utilized. Priority two are the ones that are still running but are beyond their useful life. That would also be near immediate replacement. And then priority three is the ones that are approaching beyond useful life within the next year to two. All of these have R22 refrigerant, which is a phased out refrigerant. So when you're having to repair or recharge these units, the county is getting billed for really costly refrigerant. So some of the savings that we are calculating in this is to reduce the cost of having to continually charge with R22. The Justice Center also has a aging, obsolete control system. It's not really being utilized there. We're proposing to go in and revamp this, install a new control system, recommission, train, get the entire staff up to, up to date on how to operate a newer control system out there. And these, this is from a couple of weeks ago. These are our rough order magnitude. We actually have, as of yesterday, we have the final numbers. But what we, what we have here is the, the initial base project was including water management, ozone laundry, replacing the control system, HVAC priority one units, and power factor correction on your utility billing. And that was, that's at about 2.1. And then to attack the priority two and priority three, you'll see a 2.5 and a $3.1 million All these generating, and I actually have the, I don't know if I have the new numbers in there, but the, the savings actually went up from where we're at past. Estimated utility savings, not at 98,000, but at 120,000 at the $3.1 million project.
It's at this one, or it's still along in the background? I apologize.
I don't know, that might still be the same one.
I believe it is.
It is. I can, I can hand these final numbers out.
And that's on the priority three?
Yes.
Contact on the 3.1. It went up from 97.6 to?
119.
119.
Yeah. So that went up, and then actually the price went down. I know we last discussed, in doing all three priorities at once, you're going to reduce some of the costs because it went down to 3.12. There it is. Yeah, these are the numbers, 3.12. So in doing all three of the priorities at once, you're going to save in crane costs, mobilization costs. So there's reduced costs in doing it, you know, at the same time. Like I said, our water numbers went up significantly, so we're nearing closer to actually 50% water Any questions around the numbers before I?
It looks like with the savings that we would expect, that it would be roughly a nine or 10-year payout.
Yeah, and we, this next slide here kind of shows your cash flow over 20 years of the life of the equipment. So I think it's actually 10.4.
When taking capital cost avoidance, it should be around nine.
Nine?
Yeah, nine years.
Nine years. So that's where you, your return on investments, nine years. So over the 20-year period, at year 20, you've, you're now generating, you know, generated a positive three, almost four million. So that's kind of, that kind of shows the, the lifespan of the equipment and this project over time, where you can start getting out ahead of continual maintenance issues and start being more proactive and reactive. And, you know, we talked the other day about around the year six or seven mark, starting to plan for the next kind of rollouts for equipment replacement and actually being, like I said, being proactive and being out ahead of that and being cash positive on it. So. Anything else on this?
That's it. Open it up for questions, comments.
And this last slide here kind of shows where we're at in the process. We started from a prelim audit. Right now, we're presenting the, you know, this is pre-final. We've got our finalized numbers, and we'd be looking in the next few weeks to start working towards a construction project.
So, yeah, so between now and construction, so there's still a couple of key milestones. One being if the court approves today for us to continue to move forward with this scope of work, then the investment grade audit report would go to a third-party engineering company for review and approval and any feedback. That's outside of McKinstry. It's someone selected by the, the court to review our, our report. And, and meanwhile, also work with your legal team on the terms and conditions for, for the contract upon which, you know, both parties should be ready to sign, and we can begin construction.
Okay. I think it's important to point out what we affectionately call the new portion of the jail is 15 years old now, Sheriff, I believe. And that equipment is aging. Not only that, I believe it was 2009 or so, not long after we commissioned the new portion of the jail, that we replaced the air conditioning units on what is the 1990 jail. So all of that coming together has put us in this line of where everything is aging out relatively the same. The control system you spoke of is a, is a, a legacy system that was originally put with the 1990 jail, and since we added on, it was expanded. So we have several different issues coming together at one time. And the need to, to move forward in addressing these is just that thing we do whenever we have an asset, be it equipment or be it a, a building. There's those items that must be addressed. And by going through this process, we've been able to leverage the cost savings through our utilities to, to really be able to redirect our resources so we have that quicker payback, break even on it. And that's why we were very glad to, to see that it was in 10 years, though we did, we were told that if we wouldn't have already took steps on the lighting, it might have paid off in five years. But we had gone ahead and done all of our lighting placing in all of our buildings. What was it, last year, I believe it was? I think some folks are still complaining about the LEDs. But what, what you're presenting here today is your findings, and that next step is to move forward with that independent review of an engineering firm. That is that next step, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you did present some here for us?
These are some suggestions of engineering, third-party engineering companies that know how to do this kind of calculation for your consideration.
Okay. And then, once we have that engineered and reviewed, then we choose to move forward?
Yes, Judge. So at that point in time, we incorporate any changes they suggest with your feedback, and then do a page turner with you and the sheriff on the investment grade audit report, so that you know exactly what's going into this project, work with your legal team on the terms and conditions. And if it pleases the court, we come back one more time and just having checked all the boxes to, to then move forward with construction.
Court comments, questions?
I think, you know, we spent a good, good bit of time and some money already getting to this point, which is somewhere where we knew we had to be, because I know ever since I've been on court, and I know it was happening way before, we've had some issues with, you know, water. We know we're getting at the 15-year mark, so the air conditioners, like he said, nine of them went out last year. So we're, we're at that 15-year mark when, of, of the age of the jail, so we're going to start losing some of those at a faster rate, I would suspect. So I think it's something we need to do and, and move on to this third-party reviewer so we would know where we, we were, where we stood on the project.
We always speak of our legal team.
Our legal team with one.
Our legal team with one, our county attorney. And, you know, this is a process that was developed for governmental entities to be able to leverage their savings and finance and so forth to get these type of upgrades more economically. We're a little different than the others. We want the upgrades. We're not under as big of a strain as what many are when it comes to these type of upgrades, and we'll adjust it to our process, to the, to our way of doing it, but. Clint, thoughts?
Just looking at the agreement, you know, I probably have some, some concerns. It seems kind of open-ended on the pricing. Of course, I didn't have the, the audit pre-sent over today. And for those of you that weren't on the court, and we've only, only had one of these utility audit contracts before, and if you don't recall, that didn't turn out too well. They ended up suing us over it. So.
That was from telephone service.
Yeah, so I approached this from a standpoint of caution. You know, the, the pricing in there, like I said, it didn't have numbers in the contract that was sent. I have that now that we can look at, but you know, then it, then it kind of says, the amount may be more or maybe less, and we're ready to pay that. Well, we all know it's never going to be left. It's always going to be more, it's just the way the world works. There's reference in the agreement to make subsequent agreements, that they measuring, monitoring, and verification agreement. Is that a mandatory agreement, or is that fish? There was some things like that, that, you know, I didn't know if that's something that we're just reading the contract that we were obligated to enter into, or is that optional?
So, right. Good, good comments. The, the measurement and verification is included already in the price for year one. So the, we're, we're using local government code 302 for energy savings performance contract, where, yeah, the, the guaranteed savings will help offset the cost over time, right? We're very flexible. We'd love to sit down with you and address all your concerns by way of a meeting.
But yes, year one's included, and then two through however are optional to the county if they want to continue to have this savings measure verified as, as optional.
So what?
You have, and this may be something I don't mean to put you on the spot, we may have to figure that, but what are, what are those agreements cost?
The measurement and verification for one year?
It's probably 25 to 30,000 a year.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to fix.
And so, yeah, the, the terms and conditions that, that he received was just bare bones. That was just give you a heads up and totally terms. We'll update the contract to include, you know, what we have now finalized in terms of moving forward with the spoken price.
That's the big concern was that it just seemed like, and again, I didn't have the pricing.
Yes, sir.
And it just seemed the pricing was kind of open-ended, I thought we were ready to apply check. We'd rather see a maximum amount that you're going to pay out. Rather than seeing something that never said, this is the maximum amount you're paying us for part of this contract.
And then another thing you said, as far as the cost, the format we're taking here is there's no change orders, so we can't keep billing you for stuff we did not notice or unforeseen.
And reading.
So we'll, we'll, yeah.
Yeah, it's a gross maximum price, unless you will correct us a change.
If you would stick up, because we are televised.
I appreciate you. Just wanted to clarify, right, it's gross maximum price. So unless it's ordered, the county corrects us a change, we still will, we will accept change. That being.
That is it. Yeah, just, just concerned over the pricing and, and then I think the court should understand that the monitoring and verification of this, apparently, one of your figures?
One.
Yeah, one of your, and if you wanted that, that would be additional. You know, I think the way I see that is, if you don't have that service, it's going to be hard at the end of this process, at the end of 10 years, where we're, we're, know whether or not you got your money's worth or not. I mean, we could, we could self-evaluate our water bills every month, but somebody can't sit down and compare the usage and all of that, because then you're going to get the whole response of, yeah, but what would it have been without the contract? So, so to me, I can see some benefit and use on those to the monitoring and verification. We're, we're going through this process, we're going to the end of the process. Hey, we're going to get it.
Well, that's the only way that you can quantify that you've made those marks and guarantee that they'll write us a check if we don't. Okay. Ms. Lee?
You know, I, with the long term, will we start seeing the true financial benefit of this? I'm wanting to know the present value of that is, because that's going to be taken into consideration. 10 years out is a long time. And that's concerned in $25,000 to $30,000 a year, the monitoring, whether it is beneficial to the county financially, is a secondary financial concern I have. But we do have issues and some things.
So if I can add to this. So at the year, at the end of year one, the court can decide whether you want to continue the measurement and verification. If you see the savings exceed what was guaranteed or expected, you know, it's up to the county at that point in time to decide whether it's worth it or not worth it to move forward with measurement and verification of the savings.
Sheriff?
I think $30,000 a year seems a lot to me. But my concern with the facility as it sits right now is last year, we were really, really struggling, didn't know if the state was going to close our doors, because we lost nine units. Summer's right around the corner, it's coming back up on us. If you try to order a unit, they're 36 weeks out. My concerns is the way we're, our equipment is sitting today. And I think actually the whole scope and the whole plan is a good plan, basically addressing the needs. But I still have concerns of just being able to get the equipment here in a timely manner. Like I said, I mean, summer's coming, and we don't know what, what the AC units we have right now, how they're going to hold up. And, I mean, that's really, I just, I want the state to close our doors over there. That's, that's my main concern, is basically going to revolve around aging the equipment. So I want to thank the court for taking the time and working with us for the past few months and, and trying to address the concerns, because, you know, it's our, the wait time on the equipment is out of all of our control. But I'm just glad we're looking at it and trying to address it. And, you know, the water control system, at first it kind of made me nervous, but there are other jails we've looked at, there are other jails that have them. I mean, right now, I can go over there and shut the water off or turn the water on. This new control system, you know, we can actually get down and, and be more specific on what we need to do at different times of the day. And we can close off some and not all. I mean, it's, it's a good system, it's just pricey.
Well, the part that, and you bring up, one of the concerns that I had was that what really gets pricey is when you have to send out 350 inmates, not counting what revenue is generated coming off of it. That gets real pricey. And that's a lot of the concern that, that we have. Some of the, the other issues I believe that we can work through, but having that facility operating consistently, as we always have had it, ensuring its smooth operation in the future is really incumbent upon us, is my thoughts.
And too, last year, of course, inmates, you know, have the capability to file complaints against county jails all throughout the state of Texas. And last year was the first time I'm there. And usually the jail commissioner notifies us to move complaint, do an investigation, get back to you, and then they tell us that we're, you know, last year got to the point where, you know, they wanted us to check the temperature in the cell, we give them the temperature, so then it got to the point where, okay, you're going to go check the temperature in the cell, and you're going to take a picture of you checking the temperature, and you're going to show me the reading and then send that immediately. immediately back. So, I mean, it's just, and I've never seen them. It's a 10 to 2-week thing, 10-day to 2-week process on working with a complaint. And they want me to know, like, right now, we're going to be the evidence that they want me to see right. Which I don't think is wrong, but they were hard on us last year, and it's just going to get worse.
Yeah. Continuation of the state's changing philosophy, we'll put it that way. Okay?
The other thing that I'd like to see is make sure that we have some long-term contracts with our service providers. By the time when you decrease in the amount of water or something you're using, they could increase the rates and be paying the same amount that you were paying before, you know? So, I would like to, you know, check in on something on that too, get a long-term rate set if that's possible. You know, I think we've got that, but with our electrical providers right now, it's pretty long-term.
That's a good point. That has been one of our saving graces for gracious 12 years, I guess now, Ms. Lee, that we were able to exercise electrical contracting early on and pay very reasonable rates for electricity as the commodity. Not the delivery, not those things, but as the commodity, we have great pricing.
It's extended up to 19, actually, 2030, so, in the years.
2030? Okay.
That pricing.
All right. Well, court, our next step is to find, to choose. We have a list of some that are given to us to look, or even others to review this plant. That's our next step, and something that we need to move forward with, if the court so wishes. So wish. Everything that so far, if we do move forward with this, everything we have contracted for previously rolls into the total price if we take it to a conclusion. If we do not, we write them a check for what they've done and say thank you. So, what's the court's pleasure?
I'd like to see us move to the third-party engineering, just to make sure the numbers are right, just like they told us. That's what this is for, to, you know, this third-party engineering firm will make sure they were honest on their numbers. And, I mean, because I had some of the same concerns as Anne Marie, you know, 10 years seemed like a long time. But nearly everything we do in government is down the road, not tomorrow. I mean, we didn't build the communication system for tomorrow. We built it for way down the road. Our infrastructure, our new development, everything is not for tomorrow, it's for way down the road. So, we make sure that as development comes to the county, all the ARPA money we're spending is, you know, eight, 10 years down the road. So, I think nearly everything we do in government is stuff that takes years for you to realize, you know, the cost benefits of it. But all we're doing today is just seeing if these numbers look good to a third-party, and if we want to move on with this project. So.
I agree with Commissioner McCann.
Well, then, just so that we can memorialize it, if we would, can we get a motion to move forward with select, oh, finding a third-party engineering?
I'll make the motion that we move forward with finding a third-party engineering firm to, finding a third-party engineering firm.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann and second by Commissioner Richardson to move forward, excuse me, to proceed in finding a third-party engineering firm.
All right, Dave.
I think this would be, professional services, engineering would. Clint shaking his head. Something we move quickly. Mary Margaret, you got that? All right. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time and your efforts. We will, this will not linger long, especially if Sheriff has anything to say.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Item number seven, consider and take action to amend the Henderson County travel policy and credit card policies. Ms. Lee asked that we have this discussion due to, we haven't had this discussion in a long time. We've got some, we've had quite a bit of turnover in the years, and it's time that we discuss this. There's been some changes in desired purchasing and so forth. It's just time for us to have another discussion of it. Ms. Lee?
Right. We do need to discuss the travel policy with respect to per diems, and so I bet are suited to do that during the budget, the budget. But today, our concern is, as the market is changing on places to stay and venues, whether the commissioners courts willing to allow employees and elected officials who knew about staying at the Host Hotel or the Overflow Hotel, using sources such as Airbnbs, the RVOs, or even I've had employees go on conferences, though I think the travel trailers, now we've never reimbursed for that, but are we not going to reimburse for that, for the RV spot? And what is going to be our limit on that? How are we going to handle this? And the other problem is using the county credit card to book these things. First off, that's confronting money, and that is an issue. The credit card doesn't permit this to occur. We spend hours on the phone with a credit card company, trying to get this permitted for a one-time thing. And my staff just doesn't have two, three hours to be on the phone with the Citibank, trying to get a transaction permitted that's going to be a one-time thing until the next year it comes around. So, I need to know how the county wants to, or the court wants to handle using these options, these other places to stay during conferences, and also limiting the use of the credit card, which is those things that's permitted right now at Citibank.
What we are dealing with today is more options for lodging.
Exactly.
And these newer lodging options really don't follow industry standard with credit card companies category-wise. Is that...
Not for government entities, no.
Not for government entities. Okay. The concern, go way back, is also the overall take of what the public would see it as. You know, conference and education, lodging for that, usually have discounted rates, things as that. And implementing other options might be also quite distasteful to the general public, given that we're uneducational. Is that kind of what looking as well?
That could be an issue.
That could be an issue?
Well, I think we found the same thing as, you know, used to, we didn't have the options.
Right.
You had to stay in a hotel, you know, or a hotel. Now, we have so many options, and people, especially when COVID came along, and, you know, you fall back on that. People are more comfortable staying in Airbnb, or they're more comfortable staying, you know, a lot of people have travel trailers now.
Right.
Everybody didn't used to have a travel trailer. Now, everywhere you go, somebody's got a travel trailer. But I think our main part of our policy that would, you know, if the public sees that, well, you're funding a vacation, is employee will be frugal in selecting a hotel. Or employee will be frugal in selecting, you know, overnight lodging. So, I mean, I don't think you can argue it, because sometimes those hotels are higher, you know, if you get the Host Hotel, it may be higher than the hotel next door. So, I think people just have so many options now that we didn't used to have. And people are more comfortable staying in some of those options than they are staying in hotels.
And the other thing, when they list the Host Hotel for a conference, most time within two hours, it's if you don't have it booked, but within the first two hours when they put it on, you won't get, you won't get it. You have to move to the next available hotel in there. So, which there are options, you can find one, but it's, I think this year I looked in the second option hotel was, the price was higher than the first one by the night.
But if we do allow them to stay in Airbnb or take their travel trailers, then we need to figure out, do we need to set that as being reimbursement, total reimbursement, instead of credit card?
Yeah, I'd rather do a reimbursement, just because it's so difficult to deal with that.
What do you say, Clint?
I mean, I think you're fine either way, and I certainly have no problems at all with the credit card. So, you know, use it, get doing reimbursement, individual credit cards, sorry, I think I forgot about that, and do the reimbursement.
How policy says about being frugal in the selection, how do we verify that that is a frugal choice?
I probably don't have thoughts on this. I prefer going off of the GSA rate. I mean, if I were me, if I were setting the policy, I would use the state's GSA rate. They have a hotel list for every city. And, you know, I guess if there's a downside to doing that, in that, well, you pay that state rate, whatever city you're going to. The downside of that is sometimes you may not be able to find a hotel for the state rate, and you choose to go to that conference or go to another one. But to me, that's the reason we have those GSA schedules that are issued by the state is, that's the standard, here's what we're going to pay. To me, whether you're staying in a VRVO, or pulling your RV, or doing whatever you want to do, as long as you're not exceeding that GSA rate, we don't care where you stay. If you sleep in the backseat of your car, and that's fine too, you know, as long as you're, and I think it's a problem. If you're exceeding that, you're paying more than what it would cost for a VRVO or something like that, then I think that's a problem. But if it's less or the same, to me, it doesn't matter.
The GSA rate is interesting. Haven't thought of that.
And it would be a little bit more cumbersome for our office to do that. It looks like there's maybe 15 specific destinations that are listed. And then if it's not listed on here, there's a standard rate. So, yeah, we would have to spend a few minutes looking these things up. It's less than two pages. And we can do that and just do a reimbursement, and this is what you get, and anything you choose to go over, that's on your own. It would certainly make it easier for my office, instead of auditing these hotel bills to make sure they didn't do room service or such things like that. It's on the policy right now.
And that also rolls into the discussion on the per diem. Given what our current rates are, you know, for meals is, it hasn't been touched since when? 2014?
I think it was even before that. The last thing we changed to 2014 was just changing the gas rate to match the state rate.
Okay.
But it would make our office a lot easier than before. It's kind of hard trying to keep up with these little teeny receipts for their meals. And then we have to go through and analyze the meal ticket to make sure that they didn't put Buddy on there, or they didn't purchase alcoholic beverages, or, so in a lot of ways, even though we'd have to look at those, it was streamlined, things a lot for our office. And I didn't know if the commissioners court want to discuss the meal side of this today, or wait for budget, but we'll be happy to do whatever the court wants to on that. I just, I just need clarification from the court on how we're going to handle these changes.
This may be one of those things, next week, we pull in a workshop where we can really sit in and ground on it. I really, it's hard to justify to the public lodging outside of the Host Hotel or those supporting.
Right. But if we did reimbursement with the per diems, it would, you know, employees could have their choice of how they chose to, where they decided to reside. And then we just make it so much easier for our office if we just had a flat. Well, there'd be a few people that'll take advantage of the situation. Of course, there always are. I mean, even with this policy we have now, there is. But for the most part, I think we work with adults who understand that we have a responsibility to our taxpayers, because our family members are those taxpayers. So, I just...
And the problem with not using some other outside standard rate that I see is, well, that's a tough call in the audit office. I mean, as Commissioner Richardson pointed out, if I don't stay at the Host Hotel, let's say I stay at one next door, or three stores down. I mean, then are they supposed to research all hotels in that area in Austin, Texas, to say, no, Clint, you could have booked this one down the street?
No.
$100 cheaper, $12 cheaper. And that's why, to me, finding some way that we can just make it uniform, that's just like a standard across the board, is here's what you're going to get for lodging, here's what you're going to get for meals. And again, it's just that way.
Okay. Thoughts?
I think we, probably your idea is good, is have a little short workshop over it, because I think our meal rates are well below state rates.
Yeah. Yeah, I think full day is $36? $36?
I can read it.
Yeah.
Popcorn's cheap there.
Believe me, for those that are wondering about our discussion, there was a time that we had actual discussions about if we would reimburse snacks or not, if y'all remember that, back before we ever moved into this building. So, it is, it is a good discussion to have, and we can spend an hour or two on it, I guess, in workshop. Anything further before we move on? All right. Well, thank y'all. Item number eight is receive financial reports, which there are none. Item nine is consider and take action on payroll disbursement distributions and accounts cash sheet. Rick Cahn?
Yes, Judge. I don't have any accounts and cash sheets, but I do have the payroll disbursement totals for biweekly number six. I'm going to approve them.
Questions or comments? Entertained motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spidey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the payroll disbursement totals for biweekly number six as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously by those present.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item 10 is consider and take action on submitted contracts. We have none. Item 11 is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. No right-of-ways. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Have none. But item 13 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Is there any half fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $520 and 99 cents?
Court, questions concerning the 2022 bills? Entertained motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in amount of $520.99.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCann to approve the 22 bills in amount of $520.99. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously by those present. Carpenter?
Half fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $237,029, excuse me, $237,029.55.
Commissioner Spidey?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner McCann?
No.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertained motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 bills in amount of $237,029.55.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCann to approve the bill, the 23 bills, in amount of $237,029.55 as presented. And I just remembered one question that I brought up in comments. Under the sheriff's office, there was a bit of a la route with a la route. Item 14 is consider and take action on submitted plats. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court, I have a plat that is over Lake Athens. This is actually in the ETJ of Athens, and they have asked us to do this re...
of Athens, and they have asked us to do this replat for them. Their development department is out right now for extending time. And this has taken five lots, lots one through five, and creating two lots.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertained motion?
I'd like to make a motion to replat lots one through five in the Bear Creek Estates number one, creating lots one dash R and five dash R for filing purposes only.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spidey to approve the Bear Creek Estates final plaque, creating lots one R and five R. Any other discussion? I would like to add, with the development, City of Athens, an individual being out, we had a meeting last week, myself and the development department and the city manager of Athens, having discussions about supporting them through this time, through these steps. So we'll probably have more of these over the next two or three months, just for the court's information. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number five, open and consider bids. We have none. And item sixteen, consider and take action to adjourn.
Submove.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCann to adjourn at ten oh nine. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present. We do have a workshop scheduled here to follow. If you would, please give us a...